I would like to remind council the staff will be making a presentation. We'll try not to interrupt while you're making the presentation. For this item, the city council will receive and review recommendations from the charter review committee and provide directions to the staff. And facilitator Tammy Sharif will present. Tammy?
Thank you very much, Mayor and councils. Great to be here today. I am here with Renee Gillian. He is the chairman of your citizens committee to review the charter. And sitting behind me are many of the charter members. We want to officially introduce them at the end of our presentation today. So the charter committee has started this process probably around January, met a few times, and then COVID hit. So we took a little break, came back, and I have to say, these, you selected a very detailed-oriented, discussion-oriented, I mean, they went through this charter like a fine-tooth comb and looked at each article. And a couple of things that we looked for, consistency, a lot of this, a lot of the charter has been updated, but over time, pieces of it. So what you find is it's not cohesive. So looking at cohesive language, I'm looking at what do we still need now in today's terms? And what we found is basically two types of changes were identified. The first one is what I'd call minor change, and that would be language that's outdated, language that maybe should just reference a state statute since the state statute governs, or just administrative in nature. An example is the "he" is used throughout the charter as opposed to "she," or more gender-neutral. And also, the second would be major changes, and that would be more the important and very significant changes. We thought the best way to go through this is to look at the change, changes that are being proposed by the charter committee. And what you have in front of you is a table, there's a table for each article, and on the left side of the table is the section in that article that they're proposing a change. The middle is the actual language in the charter, and over on the right is the reason that the committee is proposing a change. And some of the changes, and starting with Article 1, incorporation of former government powers and cities and boundaries, is a really good example of what I would call a minor change. And this is, the word inhabitant is used throughout to acknowledge your residence. So the committee suggests, is recommending to remove the word inhabitants and to include the word residence. And you'll see that twice in this section. All right, you're trying to get used to this. There we go. So, and I don't, did you, Mayor, did you want me to do the whole charter, or did you want to have discussion after each article?
I'm going to go to the council and get your opinion of how you would like that presented. Do you have particular items and sections that you have commented on, or do you want us to go through the entire one? I'm sorry, what were you saying?
We've already gone line by line, so just section by section for questions.
Yep.
I recommend that. Earring over here on the side.
That's it all?
I see a nod at the head.
All right.
Or by exception, anything that changed outside of what we did, like this thing maybe?
Okay, so, so I understand, you want me just to highlight the article and then not go through each change and to see if, because I know you've already reviewed it in detail, to see if you had any specific questions.
All right.
All right, so moving on to Article 2, which is the article that deals with the council. This one is, focuses on a couple, what I'd say, major changes is, would be the electoral districts, the how-to replacement of the mayor or a council member if they were to leave office, compensation for council members, and then there are also what I would call more minor changes. Are there any questions particularly in this article?
Vice Mayor Sut?
Is this the article that we spent a great deal of time, when we look at Julie and Rourke, that we spent time talking about in our group that changes were made?
Yes.
No, I know.
So yes, on this, on this article, I would suggest that, because it is the most, I guess, mediest of all the articles, that I do think we should spend a little bit of time, especially since some of the language was worked on over this past weekend, so we should walk through those.
Yeah, when Councilmember Pizzillo and I met, it was, we had a different discussion than the group before us, so I think this one is the one that we need to probably dive into with the updated, updated language.
So, in this particular article, because it does, and it is like your city manager mentioned, it's probably a lot of the most changes and some of the most significant. Would you like me to go through this? Okay. So, the first section is three, this is a language that pertains to the very original charter. The recommendation is to remove it, it's no longer needed. You'll find in Section 5 and also in Section 6, to clarify that if you don't have a full term, if you don't serve in an appointed position in an elected capacity for full term, it doesn't count towards your term limits. In regards to the electoral districts, currently, when the city hits 150,000, you automatically go into a electoral district. What the committee is suggesting is that when 150,000 is hit, that's certified by a diseminal census, meaning that that can only occur in, well, the next one would be 2030 or 2040. When you have that 150, then it goes to a ballot, and your residents determine whether or not it goes to, the city then turns into a district. Moving along, and I'm just going to hit the more significant ones, if that's fine with In regards to salary of mayor and council members, currently, the council votes on the salary for incoming council members. The committee felt that that's, that, they understood why, so that the incoming, the people that are voting are not receiving the compensation, but there was some inequity in that, on how much the council members are being paid. So their recommendation was to establish a council compensation committee made up of citizens who would review the compensation of the committee every two years, and if the recommendation is less than 1.5%, then that would be brought to the council for approval or rejection. If it's more than 1.5%, then it would go to the voters for approval. 5.1. I don't know why I always mix that up, but yes, 5.1, I'm sorry. The committee would have four members, and then this would also, and then if, when this charter is approved by your voters, that all the council members will then be compensated the same based on the last ordinance you had in regards to salaries, because the equity was a, was an issue with the committee. Are any comments on that? Moving to Section 12, council of judge qualifications and members, this is a section that, you had a section already, but it was very, very vague. The city, the committee felt like there should be more language in regards to a process if there was a council member that had, there was like some wrongdoing that the other council members needed to look at. So they outlined, the first part of this, Section A, is a process of what the notification would be, how it has to be, it must be published, and people must be notified. It also states that there must be five votes of the council members for a council, five votes of the council for a member to be removed. And, and the council member can only be removed with clear and convincing evidence for unlawful conduct involving moral perpetuity, fraud, malfeasance, misfeasance, nonfeasance, or corruption. It also has a clause in there that it takes three council members to bring a charge forward. And that makes, that ensures that one council member can't just be upset with another and throw a charge, but there has to be at least three members. Are there any questions or comments? The induction of the council was, it was suggested that the new council members that are inducted come in on the first, at first of January of the year following the election, having, so there's a, the terms start in January. Change, also, there was a recommendation with the change, the recommendation, the vacancy of the office of mayor. Currently, in the charter, there are two different ways if a mayor is to, mayor position needs to be filled, or if a council member position needs to be filled. The committee suggested to do that in both in the same way. The committee suggested that if there's more than 60 days before the candidate filing date of the next regular scheduled election, that if there's more than 60 days, then it goes to election. If there's less than 60 days vacant before the next candidate filing date, then the mayor, the council, then the, the mayor is selected by the council to fill that term.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Just tell me.
I was not here when they had their individual meetings on this, so my, I have two questions to you, please. The first question is, the election of the vice mayor, are we stipulating, we're not, we are not stipulating in the charter, the term of the vice mayor, correct? How long that person serves?
That's correct. That's right. It just, it stipulates that it has to be, right.
Okay, great. And the next question I have for you, please, is that should our mayor resign that office within 60, or after, no, with, and we have to have an election within 60 days, do we have anything in the charter that says a sitting council member has to resign their position in order to run for mayor?
All right, let me just step back from your question number one. I believe in the draft, there was a clause somewhere that said it, the vice mayor was a year, and I think there was a discussion possibly taking that out if that was the pleasure of the council.
Right.
And second, one thing we noticed after the committee, after the committee made this recommendation, was that there was potentially some concerns on what was recommended basically for that reason. If a council member were to then take the mayor position, what happens to that council member's position? Because it this way, the way it's written now is it gets backfilled, and then there's no place to go when, if the council member does not run for mayor. So that was discussed after the committees had already made this recommendation, or something that we didn't think of, and that just didn't come up in conversation. So with that, I know that staff has looked at that issue, and I believe your city attorney has thought of some ideas of what we could do to remedy that.
Thank you, Derek. Do you have the revised draft? So the intent of the committee was really to get away from the provision that you had to call a special election whenever the mayor left office, for whatever reason, which can create issues if the mayor leaves with 60 or 90 days left in the term, it's not practical to have a special election, or at other times outside of the normal election cycle, there's certainly a cost issue in calling a special election. So they looked at mirroring the process for council members, you believe at a certain point, well, I take that back, you can appoint at certain points, or you have a special election, but only if it occurs in the first part of the mayoral term. So it'll line up with the general election that's already scheduled, which, which makes some sense. What we didn't address, and I probably should have caught, is we didn't adjust the language as to what happens in that intervening time period as far as moving council members up to be the mayor. It calls for appointing a mayor until the next election, which could be, you know, three months, six months, but it contemplates backfilling that council member's seat. So unfortunately, a person who got appointed to be the mayor for that short intermittent time period conceivably could have lost their seat because they got backfilled. So we wanted to fix that, because that's not fair. So the draft you have in front of you basically makes a distinction between the two scenarios, that in the case that a vacancy occurs after that 60-day period leading up to the candidate final election, to that midterm election, so that occurs in the latter part of the term, council will appoint a mayor. And that, and then you will backfill that position, because a person will put into that mayor role until the end of what the original term was. In the other scenario, where you're going to appoint someone to be an acting mayor until the midterm election, what council would do was, would be to appoint an acting mayor, which would have all the authority and rights and responsibilities of the mayor, but that person would only serve until the midterm point in time, and then would revert back to their council seat, if that makes sense. So there would, you would be running as a short council, there'd only be six persons on the council, but it avoids that issue of a person missing, losing their council seat, if that makes sense. Councilwoman Campbell, I think you did ask a question.
Clear as mud to me, because all I'm concerned with is that I ran for Mayor Lord's seat when she had to resign to run for mayor.
Correct.
So that left her seat open, and the mayor's seat was open.
Right.
And they appointed Councilmember Pizzillo as the acting mayor, and I just, and Buckeye has just gone through this as well, because Councilmember Osborne had to resign to run for the mayor of Buckeye, so he's off the council from May, when he filed his papers, until December, and I, I don't know that that is healthy for the city. I don't know why they have to resign.
It's a state, that's a state.
I don't think they should resign, I mean, they have already been elected to that position. They shouldn't have to resign to run for a higher office, because it's, all of us have the ability, well, not the, I don't want to use ability, because maybe we don't have the ability, but we have, well, I'm going to say ability, we all could run for mayor if we wanted to, but we shouldn't have to give up our seat to go do that.
Unfortunately, state statute requires you to do that.
Statue does?
That is a state statute.
Can't change it in our charter?
I believe that it would be considered a matter of statewide concern. If you'd like us to research it.
Would you please?
We can, but.
This is the time to talk about it, literally, and I, you know, I don't have anybody else to talk about, but I just hated the fact that Mayor Lord, who had worked so hard as a council member, had to resign her seat to go run for a mayor who walked away.
The state statute says.
In a very short period of time, yeah.
The state statute.
And then we had to run again in, what, two years?
It was very quick.
Yeah.
You know, the statute requires that unless you're in your last year of office, you have to resign your seat in order to run for another office. That's, that's a state statute.
Unless you're in your last?
In your last, final year of your term.
If you're in your final year, then you don't have to resign.
Correct.
Oh, gosh. Yeah. Well, she hung on, yeah, okay. All right, well, I'm sorry, I just was, it's just, it's so disruptive to the council when we have to go through that, literally. I mean, regardless of who the mayor is, and regardless who's running, when we lose one of our council members, we want them to run for mayor because they're, they've got the experience. But it's just, when we lose them, for whatever time we lose them, it's just, you know, it's a big void for the city.
Well, we'll send some information out on the resigned to run.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Rourke, but there, there is a solution, if that's the primary issue you want to avoid, which is you could simply, in the vacancy of the mayor, appoint someone from the existing council to fulfill the remainder of the term and not have it go to election. Now, of course, the downside is, and I think the committee felt that that's a long time to go with an appointed mayor as compared to an elected mayor, but if the appointment is made from among existing council members, no one is running for office, you wouldn't have any resignations.
Well, that'd be good.
To fill that position, it would just be a vote that council takes among itself to fulfill the mayor's term for the, the mayor's spot for the rest of the term.
Okay, all right.
But I just wanted to make sure that council's aware that that is an option.
Because we could have, I wasn't on council, but had I been on council, we could have voted for you, since you were vice mayor, to become the mayor, and then we wouldn't have had to have an election. But we'd had to have an election to fill your seat.
Yeah.
And then I might not have been here, so, okay. All right, thank you.
Does this language allow for that?
Allow for the appointment of a mayor? For the, no, it does not.
In the way that, in the way that was just described?
It does not, but we could write that language.
I would like to see us do that. I mean, not, we may someday have that, but if we want to appoint the vice mayor, or...
Then we would run with six, that council would run, would run with six people?
No, the, the way that I would propose it be written, if council wants to pursue that option, is the mayor is replaced from among the body of council members.
Oh, like Surprise did.
And then that council member is then replaced through the normal council replacement process, which is you interview from the community and, and replace the mayor, oh, I'm sorry, replace the council member, pursuant to their normal charter language.
Okay.
That's correct. You appoint that person.
So Avondale and Surprise do it that way?
Yes, they did. Avondale and Surprise, both did that.
All right. Joe?
I think I'm more confused after that explanation than when we, when we started the discussion. The way, way it is set now, if it's older than 60 days prior, so for example, right now, I think they have to be in in April, correct? I believe, because they moved the dates up to February, so you have to put in your candidacy in April, so 60 days for that would put you in February. So if the position became vacant, say, at the end of January, council would appoint the mayor to fill the remaining of the slot.
Up until the midterm election point.
Up till the midterm election point, or to the terms, what's midterm election point?
Well, that'd be the two-year term. That's when you have your next general election.
Okay, next general election, okay. If it's after, if it's within the 60 days, then, let's see, was it within the 60 days?
They would, they would appoint to fill the rest of the term, the two and a half years.
The two and a half years.
I think, or at least mayor and council, I think from the body's perspective, the committee's perspective, I would ignore the 60-day thing and think of essentially the next election, because as the charter stands currently, you have to call a special election to fill the vacancy. And so we thought, frankly, for just sort of, again, kind of the lack of disruption, and to save the taxpayer the money of having to call a special election, we said if you're, you know, if you're closer to a, you know, since we have staggered terms, if you're closer to an election regardless of what your cycle is, then you can go and elect it. If you're, if you're too late to make that next ballot, then you just fill, fulfill the remainder of the term and hold the election normally. The 60 days and all of that was just the legalese to make sure that you actually could actually get your paperwork in and actually have an election properly. So I would just think of, you know, if it's, if it's a four-year term, if you're prior to, if you fill, if you're filling for more than half of the term, our goal was, you go in that election cycle. If you're within two years, the last two years of your term, then you would just fulfill the expired or the remainder of the term. That was sort of how we thought about it, because, and again, that would be removing that special election requirement. We didn't really talk about the idea of removing the election in its entirety.
Is that what the language, is that what the language says for the attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
That was so much clearer than the attorney!
Yeah, I was just, I was just saying, well, I wish I had explained it that way.
He's legislative, he's much better.
I am married to an attorney, so that probably.
But I, I think what we want to get at, and I think that might get at, is kind of the, because that's what happened with the mayor. Kavanaugh left, but there was more than two years, so you had, under state law, resigned to run.
I only, yeah, I only had how long to decide.
It was just 10 days or less, I think.
Yeah, so you resigned, Joe became our ad, acting mayor until we had the election, then you guys ran on the same cycle as me the first time, and then reran. So I think that's the solution we, that you're looking at, right? So they ran at the next, when the mayor wanted to run, she ran at the next possible election, because it was more than two years.
Right.
So we're, I think we're all on the same page.
I feel like I need a whiteboard to like tag around. I think it depends on.
We live this, that's why.
It depends on when in the.
It depends on when, and that's what the 60 days is really trying to do, is, is make it where you can actually meet that midterm point, because recognizing the state keeps moving the candidate filing deadlines, if that makes sense.
So the 60 days, if we just kind of look past the 60 days, I think we're on the same page. We just kind of know it's there for the legalese and to get the right dates.
Right.
If, if the intent is that the mayor gets replaced at the midterm election point, the proposed language works, but certainly there are other alternatives.
But then if there's only, like, nine months left?
Then the council points.
Then we just appoint and we stay there, but we want to make that fix so we don't lose the council member. So if Joe had nine months, we don't want to lose it, so Joe doesn't get to come back as a council member, because he was serving at mayor, and now he has nowhere, kind of like you have no chair left, you know, what was that game, you know, where there's chairs left? Musical chairs, that we have no chair left to put Joe in after the election if he wouldn't run. So I think that's the fix we want, so that our council member who takes the mayor's spot has a spot to go back to. We don't want to lose anybody because they decided that they wanted to put themselves out and serve, but maybe not run.
I'm going to look at Tammy and Rourke and Julie here, but, because I think, I think with the exception of a vacancy occurring in the last, or I guess it'd have to, if it occurs outside of the last year of the appointed mayor's term, the resigned to run law is still going to kick in.
Well, he's not running, let's say he didn't run.
Correct.
We just want to make sure that we have a seat to go.
It really will impact those who are interested in the temporary mayor appointment versus resigning to run, or if they don't, because they're in their final year. So it really would have to be, someone would have to consider the consequences of whether or not they want to offer themselves as a temporary mayor, because if they wanted to run, they might have to resign anyway.
Then they'd have to resign.
Yeah.
Okay. I got it.
As recommended, if I like to say.
This is, this is probably.
With of the committee's recommendation.
I'm now confused. I'm glad I don't have to run again.
At what, at what point would we be running with only one person, with one less person?
So under the proposal from the committee, as amended by the attorney, which is what you have in front of you, that if the, I don't know if you want to restate it again, Renee, since you did such a great job.
She's not asking me to do it, go ahead.
If we're appointed, if the, if the mayor's appointed, you have a seat to go back to.
Yes.
And until the next election, then you go back, and then there's an election. That's, I'm just curious, when that's, the only situation that would happen is if mayor steps down, the timing of it, and then that person, someone in the council's appointed to fill it, and then, as turn, then the next election comes up, then that person goes back to council or decides to run. At that point, they'd have to, you just decide, do you want to give up their spot or not?
Yeah, if you're serving as the acting mayor, if, unless you're in the final year of your term, you're going to have to resign if you're going to run for mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Right, I think, so the language from Rourke addresses the situation of if you want a, I don't want to use.
Temporary.
Temporary mayor who, you know, is not intending to run for mayor. That is not something that, that came up in our discussion as, as the committee.
It was just addressing an issue in the, in the drafting.
So this is probably the most complicated part of the charter, because of the domino effect, right? So if you have someone go up, and then you have someone come up, how it happens that the person's just there to temporary, right? And I don't think that was part of what we discussed. So afterwards, we were able to come up with something that worked, the same concept of you're only, if it's mid, if you leave before the midpoint, we replace them, but there is a fallback if that council person that's appointed can go back to their position. So again, what the committee did is they provided, and these are just recommendations. The council can, you know, accept them, not accept them, modify them, because we're looking for a lot of feedback tonight about what, how we want to move forward, and this is probably one of the most complicated and also very important, right, part of the charter. The mayor is an important position, just like all, you know, council positions.
If we don't, if we're having trouble understanding that as our way, we can clean it up, because I'm afraid when it goes to the citizens, they might look at it and go...
They're not going to understand either.
What are you guys talking about?
I, I think that the way it's written, you know, it's not an easy way to write it that's legally.
You need a flow chart.
Yeah.
I think, I think.
We made one.
Depending on the actions of the mayor and council, I think that part of the education campaign could be, I think you'd have a flow chart, right?
Right.
Like, if you have a vacancy in the mayor's office, where is it in the mayor's term? And then who is filling that spot? Is it a council member, is it an outsider? Where are they in their term? And then, you know, then then the last year of resigned to run law.
Right.
So did you come to a conclusion, team?
We all said.
Well.
Summary, what I, so what I heard was, we have two choices on how to fill this. One is automatically pushed to the next general election, which is what we have currently, or, as Julie suggested, we appoint the mayor to fulfill the rest of that term, and then, which that individual would, like Avondale and Surprise did, but that individual has to be cognizant of when the next election is, they may have to resign to run.
No.
So let me give you, let me give you this scenario, we'll use what happened before. So Georgia would have stayed mayor when Kavanaugh resigned, and she was in her last, you had just been elected?
Two years. I was in my second, I finished my two years of my.
Yeah, so she was in her last two, well, two years and five days, or whatever it was. So she would have been appointed as mayor by the council people, would have stayed in that role all the way up, would not have had to resign, because she would have been in the last year of her term.
That part's not relevant. She would be the mayor and could run as an incumbent, and as an incumbent, you don't have to resign to run.
Right. Oh, okay, yeah, if you're appointing that, that rule doesn't apply.
There's no resign to run in that scenario.
Okay, so change the scenario. It's not, it's not Georgia who was vice mayor at the time, but it was Joe who had just been elected.
Oh, no, he was in '09.
No, I'm sorry, it wasn't you.
And he had two years. Yeah, we were coming in.
So if you were, if you were in my position, so you're in my position, I have... So if you were, if you were in my position, so you're in my position, I have, I have four years left. So if.
Yes?
I'm gonna say you resign, for whatever reason. This council says, Bill, we want you to do it, for whatever reason. If I take that position, I would have it until her term is up in twenty-two. But I still have two years left on my term, so I would have to resign my council position, right?
Sounds like dominoes.
Yeah, you wouldn't revert back to council member at the end of the term. You would be the mayor and fill out.
I would be the mayor and running as the mayor.
And your position would have been replaced by an appointee from.
I'm glad I could, I'm glad I could simplify that then.
But that's the, that's the one option. And then the other is that it goes to a temporary appointment while the position is up for election. And because it's an election, you resign to run rules under state statute apply.
So, Mayor, may I ask our attorney, when this meeting is over, could I have a, the copy that explains the changes or whatever?
Oh, do you not have one?
No, I do not.
It's right there.
Here.
Well, I don't even have my computer on. Sorry.
Um, it's, I think you need a second page.
Okay.
It's two pages, so you have a back, a front and back.
Okay, thank you.
So is there a, is there a, um, thought on?
Well, I, I, I think with this discussion, it kind of reminds me of that Abbott-Costello skit. I'm still trying to follow it, um, to be honest with you on how this all works, except by simplistic wise, if it becomes vacant, depending on when it becomes vacant, you're still gonna appoint one way or the other, correct? Because you gotta fill it. And the whole goal was not to have a special election. So you're still gonna appoint somebody. The question is, is whoever you appoint, depending on where it is in the schedule, they don't have to resign because you're appointing somebody. So the question is, is if you appoint, depending on where it is, well, you have to backfill that position. And if you have to backfill that position, then that position for that person who filled is out. Position's gone.
Unless they continue to run for mayor.
Unless they continue to run for mayor, but that position's gone.
Yeah, they can't go back.
No.
Not in how, not in how, um, it was drafted.
That, that scenario is not here i- in either scenario. Because that was the issue we were looking at with the first draft, and we fixed that. So there, there's nobody who's gonna be left without a seat.
So there's, you're still gonna have six until the next election, is that what you're saying?
If you have the acting intermediate role mayor, yes, you'll run six to the next election.
So the person never loses that until after the next election? And if they run for mayor and get it, then you're gonna have a vacant, you'll have a vacant seat.
Yes.
So you, this council will have to point that as opposed to that being elected?
In your scenario, okay, now we have like the fourth scenario here. So you're saying you have an acting mayor who, under the right to ru- resign-to-run laws, is eligible to continue in the seat without resigning. They get appointed mayor at the midterm. Yes, there would be a vacant seat on council that they'd have to appoint.
Yeah, because you can't hold a seat, right? You can't hold one seat and run for another.
Well, as long as you're acting, you, the seat would still be there in that scenario.
If they're running for mayor, they were acting, but now they're running for mayor as the acting mayor, then they'd have to give up their council seat once they pull the papers to run for the mayor?
If they are in their final year of office, they would not.
So this, I'm giving you scenario number thirty-two here.
But, but, but they can't run for council at the same time.
But let's say Joe's acting. I'm just, I'm putting more mud here, I'm sorry. If Joe's acting, but he wants to be able to go back to his seat, we aren't filling that, but then Joe says, I want to run for mayor, and he doesn't win.
He leaves out.
He doesn't get to go back to his council.
No, because I think, okay, so in that scenario, the only way he doesn't resign is if he's not in it, is if he is in his final year of office. And at that point, he's either elected to run for council or run for mayor. Otherwise, he, he would have had to resign.
And that wouldn't work with two-year terms staggered anyway, so mathematically, okay.
A quick question. So the longest we would run with six and one would be?
I'm asking another question.
Year and?
It'd be like nine months, I think. Eight, eight to nine months would be the longest.
Okay. I, I think I, the intent, we want to make, we don't want to upheave the entire, the entire council, the domino effect. So we want to save on special, like we want to save a special, save on special elections. And we want to not have the upheaval, we want to be able to vote amongst ourselves for whoever to appoint or however, and then run without, with just six people if needed, and have that person have a council seat. So I don't know if that's clarifies.
The least disruptive is to appoint a mayor.
That's what we're trying to do. I'm trying to get the intent, the intent, so, so we can put the, the bones, the meat on the bones after we have the intent down, but.
So, so if the council direction was to just appoint a mayor for the remainder of the term, that's pretty easy language. And then you just fill, you backfill through the normal council member appointment process. So that's the most straightforward.
Okay.
The other, when, the other is what brings up all these scenarios.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't want to find ourselves in some random scenario that we find, some rabbit hole trail we find ourselves down that we wrote ourselves into.
But I do think that, um, if, if it helps, I think that what council really needs to come to agreement on is it more important to have stability among council without having the resign-to-run? And, you know, we saw in Phoenix, I think, three people, you know, resigned to run for, for mayor. So you, you either, you have to balance that desire for stability versus the desire to have an elected mayor. Because I mean, that's, I think those are the two.
I think that captures.
Yeah, those are the two competing, um, goals. And I think that if council can really decide amongst yourselves which of those two goals is more important, to have an elected mayor or to have the stability among council, then we know which of those two directions to try to write clarifying language around.
Sheri? I, I have to go, I think, for stability, and I may change my mind because this is just all over the board. But my theory is if we are still at large, that means everybody had the opportunity to vote for the council member, so it's not district. And then that brings me to the question for the districts. Is that a must-go-to districts or send it out? Or is that something we want to put a may? Because if you are selecting someone to take the place of the mayor for the remainder term until the next election for the stability, I'm okay with that because we are all at large, so everyone had the chance to vote for every single council member here. Where I get a little, ugh, I don't hope I like that deal, is the districts. I don't know if that makes sense. I, I don't know.
I think they had some there on, on the districts. They changed the.
Surprise is district.
They changed the population.
Right, no, on the, on the districts, what they're, um, it is that it, once a, um, census is taken and you have a hundred and fifty thousand population, which is the closest, the next would be two thousand and thirty, if you have a hundred and fifty then, it would go to the voters. The voters decide whether it goes to districts.
And I just wonder if that should be a may-go-to-the-voters?
Well.
Shall go to the voters.
The, the, the committee felt like it should go, it should go to the voters and they give the, um, your residents an opportunity to decide whether they wanted to go to districts at that time. And it could be, looking at projections, and of course, projections are based on the data you have now. You know, maybe two thousand and thirty, maybe more, two thousand and forty, which would be almost twenty years from now.
I guess my concern was if we look to do the mayor as part of the council to have that continued continuity, as long as they're at large, that really kind of doesn't change the dynamic. But then once we go, if we try to do the mayor as part of the council, but if it's from districts, then that does disenfranchise the other six. So that's where I'm kind of like at a.
I, I will say that a lot of the, and maybe Renee, you can jump in here too, is a lot of the couns, there's several committee members and that felt strongly that at some point, that when the city of Goodyear is big enough, they would want representation from council members. And so there was quite a bit of discussion of that, whether one-fifty, you know, is, at that point, take it to your voters and see what they think, but they felt that should be the, um, residents' decision.
And, and we're gonna look at this again every ten years, wasn't?
And that, that's a good question. One of the recommendations is that we put in the charter that the, that the council should, not shall, but should look at the, the charter as a whole, holistically, every ten years. But for the, most likely, the charter will be looked at for some other reason, right? Something will come up. I mean, the charter can always be looked at. The council at any point in five years, they could say, well, let's do this again. That's up to the, up to the, um, the council.
And I think the nuance.
For a hundred and fifty arbitrarily, I mean, we did not have a lot of discussion when we said that hundred and fifty. They just threw out the number. And, um, somewhere in there, I, I don't know how you do this, we have to consider how the city develops, if they want to go district. And that was our problem of not doing districts, because the west was not enough developed to really do that. And by doing at large, um, we get a lot done in the city. And, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm a large person, because I've seen that nobody takes ownership of just one little section. We take ownership of the entire city when we're looking at something. And looking at the councils at our district, um, they, and, and the other thing, everybody has an assistant, everybody has, it's a cost. And so I've never really been for it. Now, maybe there'd be someday, but I don't, anymore, I do not think a hundred and fifty thousand is a big enough population to, to warrant that. And again, I think we, we're still trying to develop it out.
Yeah.
Because we're still going, we're still going south. And it goes all the way to Mobile, you know that. So, so at large, it just, it ensures that you will look in the entire city. We, and we do do that, as you all well know, so we don't pick and choose, yeah.
So Mayor, uh, I would say the robust discussion the council has had regarding the vacancies is comparable to the robust discussion this group had about districting. I would, I would say that was probably our most, uh, uh, robust, potentially contentious, complicated and complex conversation we had as, as a committee. You know, I think that we had, we, the committee felt that there were pros and cons to going to a district system, uh, in theory. And then I think when we looked at it in practice, as it relates to the city of Goodyear, to be colloquial, I think we kind of thought, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And so we didn't really feel like we needed to go to districts now, in twenty-twenty, after the census. And so, you know, we kind of struggled with, why did they pick a hundred and fifty thousand? And we ultimately, you know, kept that with the theory that, you know, we think the city's running well now at large. And, you know, we, we debated back of, well, if I have a district, I have my more closer representative. But it's also, it's at large, I can go to any of you with my issue. I don't have to just go to who represents my district. But we didn't want to presume to know what the future residents, not inhabitants, of Goodyear would want. And so the idea of, um, having that question resurface, whether it's in twenty-thirty or twenty-forty, was a question we thought was worth having, but that us not, you know, we, we don't have the information, that the information that people twenty years from now will have in terms of where is Goodyear as a, as a position. And recognizing, as Tammy noted, that, that the council could always undertake the issue at a future, at a future time. And that's really how we came to, I think, the decision we had, is that we, I, as a group, didn't feel the need for districting now and in the near future, but we didn't want to necessarily close the door unilaterally.
No.
Did we finish the?
The observant, if you look at Glendale, their district, and, and just keeping, uh, watch on them and reading the newspapers and talking to them, they get very involved in those districts. And, um, and lots of, uh, anger, and, I mean, many councils do that when they're, they're like that. And so that was my observation, and I, I've been following and tracking that since I've been in this office. So I'm sorry, I have to turn over my council. Go ahead, Molly.
Well, I, I really struggled with this part because our city is only ten miles wide, and it's very, very long. And we could easily get fifty thousand more people in Estrella, in Rainbow Valley, and nothing in the west. And if we go to districting, there's no way you're going to be able to make it equal with numbers. And I think the number that's in our charter now is not feasible for the way we are growing. We do have a master plan. But, um, as your committee said, a resident can go to any one member for any reason, at any time, for anything. They do not have to find out who their district is and then call that person. And that is, to me, an advantage for our city, and our residents seem to enjoy that. However, I have walked precincts for other council members in Buckeye, Glendale, Peoria, and Surprise. And I am astounded at how little participation there are from some of the districts, because they're much smaller than the other districts. They were not able to draw their lines. They did it geographically rather than by population. And that concerns me, because until we really fill out and it's equitable, I don't see us doing that. And I, if anything, I would want that number risen to two hundred thousand, even though that sounds like a big number. But we've got to fill out the West Valley to be fair to everyone. I mean, the north is pretty much filling out, and Estrella is pretty much filling out. Rainbow Valley is just now kicking off getting ready to go.
Estrella's got a lot more land to go.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, but Estrella has a lot more land. It's amazing.
Well, I know, and they've got a lot more to go out there, but, I mean, they could put all six districts in Estrella if you're doing it by population, by the time they get all built out, so.
And I think that when this council formed, we had at one time three from Pebble Creek.
We did. We had three from Pebble Creek.
That caused a lot of.
There were five.
We had five.
Five from Pebble Creek?
At one point, there were five from Pebble Creek.
Yeah. And it caused a lot of conversation, and I don't blame people. But at, at that time, the population wasn't as strong as the others. And so people, people weren't stepping up to run, you know, there was the opportunity, but people just weren't doing it, so. You have a question?
I appreciate the committee and all the discussion. This is a very complicated issue. Following up on, on the, I guess, the cons of districting, one of the things about being at large is that each of the council members are accountable to the entire city. And everybody has the opportunity to vote people in or vote people out. And in terms of running, it's a lot easier. If you're in a district, you don't have to get near as many signatures and things like this. And when you are at large, you really have to be fully invested. One of the things that came up in our small group was even just to remove the trigger and just, just leave it out and wait and see how the future is. Because we have different legislative districts, we have, uh, different utilities, we, with different school districts. We are so divided up, and I think the one strong thing about us is that we're one Goodyear. And, uh, I, I sure would like to see that kept.
Take the trigger out, with that, just saying we're not going to redistrict.
At the trigger, the number.
Oh, the number?
I think it'd be fair to say, we probably discussed every, uh, every permutation, including taking it out in its entirety. Recognizing that the, the, the council could always, you know, resubmit the, the,
Certainly.
reform the committee and reevaluate the issue, as Tammy noted. We did, we did review that, and, and, and actually, I'll give a shout out to our, our vice chair, Jared Hickman, who I think, um, pretty well characterized the fact, I think, one of the points you made, which was the fact that there are many things that can determine sort of what is an area, what is a community. And, uh, you know, one of the examples, which is sort of basic, was kind of that idea of, you know, if you're south of I-ten, you're on public water. If you're north of I-ten, you're on private water. And what do those lead to different decisions that you may make, uh, based on some of those different nuances? So we did, we had, uh, a lot of discussion about, uh, the different ways to, I guess, skin this cat.
Right. And there was a lot of, I mean, there's both ways, and I think also, but just, there was a lot of feeling as though they, there was representation that was wanted, and a lot of people come from other areas that are used to that and feel like, oh, they know, they know who to call. The concern about clustering also brought, came up, uh, and the committee members of clustering of council members. But it was like, like Renee mentioned, we, it was, it was a very good robust. I think with the compromise was to keep the one-fifty-go-to-vote, not have an automatic, um, trigger that takes you right into districting.
Yeah. Because all one-fifty does is generate a vote.
Yes, right, and it's one-fifty.
Pay for a vote. We've got to pay for an election.
You just do it with the election.
The one-fifty would be at the.
At the general election.
At a, at a census point, so in two thousand and thirty, two thousand and forty, and then you would have it the next election point.
And then the next election point. So you're not, it's not a special election, it's just asking the voters at that time. Plus, the council can do whatever they wish. I think we need to show our residents that we're, um, that we're still open to that. It's still a possibility of going forward, but we're gonna let them decide later on. Instead of us deciding at ninety thousand people, this is what we think we should do. I mean, we were, you know, the original number was sixty thousand or sixty-five thousand.
Fifty, yes.
It was just, it was arbitrary as well. And, um, there was a lot of talk at that time about that's a really good thing, because, and I, I said five, there were four members on council, I was doing it in my head. But there were four members of council, so a majority of the council was from one community, and people were out of their minds over it. And then when the charter change occurred to one-fifty, there was a concern that it was, it was an attempt to control what was gonna happen forward of the city. Now, fast forward to twenty-eleven, everything changed. You look at how it's spread out.
We have four right now from Palm.
We have four right now from Palm Valley.
Well, Palm Valley is everything north of I-10 except Pebble Creek.
I'm just saying, we have four from Palm Valley. So, you know, you, Joe, Laura, and Brandon.
I'm not, I'm south.
You're south, you're not Palm Valley?
Just us two south of the, south of the I-10.
So are you by yourself?
I'm in Canyon, Canyon Trails.
You're by yourself?
So I'm by myself.
Terry's been trying to talk here for a few minutes. Terry?
I, I agree 100. I think Laura stated it very well. I, for me, I, I see so much division right now, and we're going to look at this in 10 years. So in 10 years, if we want to put it back for our citizens, this is just arbitrary. We're just right now arbitrary, saying, hey, let's just have districts. I mean, it's still arbitrary to put it in there. So I think the, looking at it, and that is a possibility in 10 years. I know I'm so tired of my district, my party, my this. This is the one, I was telling you guys earlier, I'm just done with them all. Because this is the one political subdivision that seems to work, even compared to other cities. Chandler has 250,000, and they function as one large group. And I think we actually function, and I see us function where I don't see other levels, even the state legislature. It's my district needs this, and my district, and our district needs the water, and our district doesn't, and it's a lot of fighting. Whereas we can work. I, there's only a couple of us right now, but that's subject to change as people move and get involved. Hopefully, all you guys on the charter committee, I'm done. So anybody interested? And that's, I think it's great we have such interested citizens to bring this forward, but having done this and gone through the mass exodus where our council was, you know, thank Joe for stepping up and doing such a great job as the mayor in that period, I would propose we scratch that for now, know that we can always, whoever, future councils, it will not be me, we'll bring it back, and then also have the mayor appointed as for the remainder of the term. And I like that idea because, again, it's at large, so then everybody has a say. We don't have to have a special election in 60 days because our mayor, Mayor X, whoever would be appointed, would have been appointed at large anyway because we didn't have districts. Once we go to districts, that kind of muddles that up, and then you start getting, well, you only pick people from X neighborhood. So that's my proposal.
Well, what we have here in Goodyear is we have people that have moved here from all over the country. And so they come and they want the politics like they did. And we get that quite frequently, you know, why aren't you partisan, you know, and why are you nonpartisan, and why do you do this? And, you know, we, in Chicago, we did this, and Michigan, we did that. So that's always, that brings up the conversation. So I just add that to it. So where are we on this now?
I, I want to go back to the election. I want to finish the election one, too, but I'm okay with how it is now, with the wait till 150, let go to a vote for that, for that portion. But I'd like to go back to the conference, I don't think we finished the conversation around how we're going to do the election.
All right, so we need to, two issues. I don't know if there's a consensus on the electoral districts yet. I'm hearing two different things, which direction you want to give us. Are we going with it, remain how it is, are we not? I just don't, I, I need a consent.
It sounds like everybody would rather stay at large, isn't that what you?
Yeah, I'm with Laura.
I'm not supposed to really vote on anything here, so I'm just trying to look at everybody.
I'm looking for, I think, direction, consensus direction.
Yeah.
Looking at the lawyer.
So what, what that would, what that would look like is that would be your current charter when this is brought to the public to look at, they'll see all these changes, and so that section would be struck out.
It's okay.
Okay, and it, just so you know, so, I mean, that's, so it would be struck out when it goes, and it goes, is that the consensus I'm hearing, the direction?
It sounds like it is.
I think we've heard from all council members, so I.
Okay. Yeah, Kent, Kent. Joe?
The problem is, if you strike that out at 150, you're going to district. That's what it says right now, right?
I think the proposal is to remove the trigger. It would strike the whole section out. There would be no, there would be no need for the section if you're not going into districts. And maybe the attorney would feel different, but I.
No, no, we would strike out everything that refers to districts.
You'd strike it all out, not since you're removing it from your charter. You're removing the trigger.
So there's no, and there would be no reference to districts at all?
Correct. Because there's nothing to reference. You're not giving any kind of trigger point, you're not giving any, you know, so there, you would just remove it if you're going to remain at large.
Well, I suspect at some point, you're going to have to address the issue.
I'm sure it's going to come up some point, but then that somewhere down the way.
And to be honest with you, I didn't have a problem the way you, you put it together because they're not going to vote on it till 2040 at the earliest. Because when you think about it, every 10 years, you've got to have the census at a 150. And so not till 2040 where you'd probably even be there. And then the vote goes in, you know, so you're looking at something 20, 20 years from now.
Yeah, but either council could decide to.
You could decide to change it by then or whatever the case may be, but at least you're addressing the fact that there's a possibility of it going to districts, that's all, you know, as opposed if you take it out, then you're going to have some blowback probably of, why didn't you discuss districts? I'm just throwing that out where.
I think we're not taking it out. The consideration is always there.
Yeah, if we take it out, in five years, we're supposed to look at it again, we can put it back in, and then maybe it'd make more sense.
Because the, the problem is, this is my view on this, is that you don't, you don't know exactly the development and how each section is going to go. And that's been worrisome for us all alone. And we've said this over and over again, we're worried about the people in the West area, you know, because there aren't enough in there to, to, to kind of be a power area for. And so that, that's always been our, our, really, as we've been developing, yes.
Yeah, Mayor, but as, as the council member mentioned, it wouldn't be at least till 2030, most likely 2040, when it would go to vote for 20, so 20 years down the road.
And then there'll be at least two charter committees to relook at it at that, during that time period.
You're going to be looking at it every 10 years.
Yeah, every 10 years, I would think that, I would think most councils would be doing that. I think you have to, to do planning of some sort.
That's the only reason why I didn't have a problem with the, with the way it's written, because you're looking at 20 years, and you're going to have two council review, you're going to have two charter reviews by then that may change it altogether and says, let's push it out another 10, 20 years, you know? Because we're not there yet. We need more, more people, so. The only reason why I like it is it addresses it to some extent, because you say people come up to you a while, when you're going to go to it. Well, you've got something in there. Maybe 20 years from now, but you've got something in there.
You may, but that could change also.
Could change, because you're going to have two, you're going to, every 10 years, you're going to review it, so it could change again. But to take it totally out and not address it at all, in my opinion, I think you're making a mistake.
Council?
For a city that's 11% built out, we're going to have constant change and constant growth, and I just would foresee a lot of shifting and alteration depending on which way the growth. I think for cities that are maybe all built out and their population's stable and established, you know, maybe that makes more sense. But I think one of Goodyear's strengths, I think, is that we, the collaboration, and I just would hate to lose that.
You know, I, I think I was in the same boat with, with Joe at the start of the conversation. It was in the original charter, it was, you know, the original charter, what, '87? I think it's when it started, is that the original charter?
Yes.
'87? Here we are in 2020, you know, 30 years later, we're still not anywhere near where we, where we should be.
Yeah, '87.
It's always in there. I know that if I'm alive in 2040, I won't vote in support of, of districting because I don't believe it's in the best interest of the city. So I would, I think at this point, would support just the removal of it and let the, let future councils decide whether they want to add it back in. But if we're going to go through this wholesale change, you know, to, to remove it, with the caveat, and I think in the documentation that we provide to the public is, you always have the ability to add it back in.
That's right.
I think we just can't, we just can't produce a document that has a strike through with no explanation. And I think that's key to, obviously, the, the way we talk about this whole document is going to be key, but that particular section needs to have a, the council felt that the public always has the ability to add this back in at any time, but did not want to restrict future blah, blah, blah. That's it.
So with that, I believe we do have consensus to remove the trigger from, from the document, so we'll reflect that in the next draft.
All right, so we'll remove it. All right, so moving forward then with the replacement of the mayor, was there a consensus on, I believe there is more discussion, and?
I, I think stability, whatever it takes to make it stable.
Yeah.
Okay, I think should be the focus. If you can get it that simple for stability, whether it's appointing for the rest of the term, whatever the case may be, so you don't have chaos or whatever, to me, that's the way to go.
I agree. It's good, it's good for the staff, it's good for the, for the community.
So the scenario where, when the mayor is, a council member replaces the mayor, that person stays there until the end of the term?
They essentially become the mayor, and then they would run as an incumbent, so you don't have any of the resigned-to-run issues and their positions. So if you offer yourself up for your peers to vote you into that position and you're selected, your council position would then be filled pursuant to charter provisions. So you don't, you don't get to go back. You would be, you would be the mayor.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
The horse is dead, we're never going to. That was really mean for horses. I just have a question, something I've always wondered about, and I don't know if it was addressed, and I, it doesn't matter either way, just, you and her horse over there. Was there any conversation on, right now, our mayor has two terms, our council has three terms? Was there any conversation on that? And I don't even know why that originally was different. So I'm just, I have no clue, so just a question.
Oh, yeah. You mean like my term, that I'm going to be one of the longest mirrors that's been in Goodyear?
I don't, I don't, yeah. I don't recall the, the committee having any problems or concerns with the way it is now. I don't, Renee, maybe you want to, so nothing was, there was no recommendation for changes?
I think the lawyer can give an explanation of why I've been extended each time.
Actually, well, I, I don't know the reason why there's a difference in the term limits, because it is three terms for a council member and two terms for mayor. But at one point, there was a transition in the, wasn't it mayor, two-year terms at one point?
Yeah, there were two.
Yeah, so then I think when that got changed, right, then it got changed over to two-year terms. So I think it mirrored up to the, the old two-year terms.
We don't want to go back to that because that, that's very limited.
I was just curious, I just always wondered why there was that difference.
Well, I, I had reasoned that I, two years is because they interrupted my four-year terms. I had to quit at two years. And then they added some more because the state changed our election date.
Valid elections.
So then I got two more for that, is that right?
Right, you filled out a remainder of a term which doesn't count for a term under the charter. So then you were entitled, you could run for two more terms.
And so that was an area, I would say the, some of the, I don't want to call them administrative, but some of the procedural items like, like the term limits, whether or not, you know, an appointment counts as a term, how do we handle that, which, which Tammy covered. Another one was ages. And frankly, it was one of those things of.
You said ages.
We kind of had a debate, and the question was, you know, just to give you a piece, you know, if at 18, if you're old enough to serve and die for your country, and if you're old enough to vote, should you be old enough to run for the office, to be elected, and vote for yourself? But I would argue the, the committee ultimately couldn't come up with a good rationale. We wanted to have a reason why we changed something, right? And so, you know, because we, we sort of, there were, there were, I guess I'm just speaking for myself, it's kind of the idea of, would I vote for myself, would I vote for 18-year-old Renee? Probably not. But I can't really come up with 25. Why? Because now you can rent a car, right? It was, it was that issue of, we, we wanted to have a rational basis for the changes that we brought to you and recommendations we, we made. And I, I don't know that I can say definitively that we said, well, you know, because, here's why you're going to have three and two. I think other than just that idea, we really wanted, you know, that idea that the council member position should be kind of a training ground to then be mayor. And so, but that, that's about the best I can, I can recollect. We didn't, we didn't have a specific, I don't, I don't recall a specific, here's why we're going to do, or keep the, you know, SASS quote in this case.
All right, I think we are ready to move forward?
Yes.
All right, so just two more items in this article.
Going to move forward, guys.
That I think, well, in this article that I think I'd like to point out, and that's vacancy of the council member, again, the whole 60 days, if it's 60 days before the filing deadline, then you would go to the election. If it's less than 60 days, you would have a person be appointed to that position, to the council member's position. And then the next item that I would point out is currently, Section 16 requires that the council shall give notice of when you're going to have meetings in an ordinance, but you're not, but you're not to have meetings less than two times a month. Committee suggested removing that, that's more administrative in nature, you can, that can, if it's in an ordinance, that can be placed in your code. But that, pretty much, it gives you the decision of how many, but not requiring two times, knowing that maybe in the summer, there's not as many agenda items and, you know, vacation or whatnot. And I, yeah, so 15, see how good I am here at the, this is Section 16, and I have passed Sorry. So there's vacancies, vacancy of member, this is quorum, oh, here we go, so minutes are now, journals are now minutes. So it should be right after that, 16.
It should be right before.
There we go. So right here, this is where we're saying we're going to, it's meetings of council, boards, commissions, and commit, and committees, changing the title just to meeting to council. Boarding commissions are, their meeting times are based on their, whatever their ordinance or bylaws are. But this just says specifically, you have to have meet twice a month. So we're just scratching, just removing that. Doesn't mean you can't meet, you can meet more than twice a month, but that would be up to the council to decide that. And then the committee felt like, felt good about that because you are responsible to your constituents, and if you weren't doing your job, there's, you know, opportunity for your constituents to let you know that. And then that is really the only major change, except maybe moving, you know, changing the word journal to minutes. So let's move on to Article number three, which is the city manager. Looking at the very first part of this article, Section 1, currently, the charter states that it's at the discretion of the council to enter a contract. Really, it's best, it is really best practices for both the employer and employee to have a contract, so to require a contract. And also that the contract terms and length is something that is negotiated in the contract. That doesn't need to be in a city charter. Remember, the city charter are laws, your code are more in administrative, that's more administrative issue, and that can be, again, that's something between the employer and the employee. There's also Section 5 where it talks about, again, I'd say more, it's administrative in nature, and that assistant city manager qualifications and duties, that if the city manager were to leave, we would then have an assistant city manager. Well, that position's no longer here. So making this more general, that the city manager will leave a person that's, that will designate a person to perform her or his duties when they're gone. And so make it more generic, you're going to, your organization's going to change over time, and so whom that is will be up to the city manager, and obviously, it would be a qualified person. And then finally, under Section 6, currently, there's a clause in here that the city manager cannot be removed within a period of 90 days, next, succeeding the next municipal general election. And the committee's suggesting that, that actually be changed to the induction of any council member following the election. So it doesn't start when the election occurs, because that council member's not even starting their job until they're inducted, right? So once the induction occurs, then the, the clock basically is set, per se.
That's good.
Moving, any questions on that? If not, moving to Section 4, which is administrative departments, offices. If not, moving to section four, which is administrative departments, offices, this, in this one, just to highlight, in, like, for example, in the first section, it says a council will, will determine where, when positions are not compatible, it's more administrative duties, those are the functions of the city manager, so if you look at that, we're making it clear it's a city manager's functions. There's a section in here on city clerk, it actually almost looks like a job description, what they should do, that shouldn't be in there, it should be that you're gonna have a city clerk, the city clerk will report to the city manager, and the duties will have been, been outlined in ordinance. Looking at section three of this, it actually discusses your city attorney, the city attorney, and the committee viewed the city attorney as parallel, kind of mirror to your city manager, right, the level, they're officers of, of the, of the city, where the city attorney should also have a written contract, and again, that the, there's that sixty days clause after the induction of a council member. And also added to the city attorney's section is that the removal of the city attorney, like with the city manager, takes five members of the council. The final item on here is the merit system, a lot of organizations are looking at the merit system as far as who should be covered in the merit system, currently, your charter covers everybody but your charter officers, and the committee felt as though the, this would allow, looking, allowing the council to determine through an ordinance, who should be covered and who should not be covered, whether everyone should be covered, great, have an ordinance, but maybe not, and as, as employment changes, as views change, as, you know, how we function as a, as an organization changes, that might change, as you recall, the state used to be covered when I worked there, now a lot of the employees are uncovered, some organizations, the, the department directors are uncovered, and then the rest of the staff are covered, typically, and if something like this were to occur, there'd be a grandfather clause of anyone that's, you know, in there now, it remains the same, and anyone hired at whatever level you deemed would be at will, per se, would then be at will. Any questions? Moving, there were no changes to article five, moving to article six, is the finance and taxation, in this section, and I'll quickly go through this, there's a lot of verbiage regarding old finance practices, so, for example, having a sinking fund, doesn't even sound good, but we don't use them anymore. There's another one in here, talking about a, oh, a cash basis fund, again, outdated, so in essence, they took out, they struck out all the, the language that's specific to the type of process, and basically said the city will establish an accounting system that follows generally accepted accounting principles as set forth by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and it was important to the committee to identify what those standards are in that committee. And then just to, just to step back, at the very beginning of this charter, of this charter article, it does, it defines a finance director, and they are suggesting to remove that, that's administrative, you don't need a position in your, in your charter, obviously, you can have a finance director. And then later in this article, it talks about an independent audit, the committee's suggesting to remove the language here, and just state that the independent audit will occur pursuant to state statute, because state statute governs that, and that way, if things change, you're very specific, you're gonna, you're gonna do it, you're gonna follow state statute. Moving then to article seven, there we go, should have brought my other glasses, there we go, okay, let me see if I can find the ones, a lot of our processes have changed because of technology, we used to post our notices, right, at City Hall, at the library, now we have websites, so a lot of this change is bringing up to, to new standards, so instead of saying you're gonna post your, your ordinance and resolutions at City Hall, it just says the, you're gonna post it at the official posting location, giving you more options to meet whatever standards are, you have at the time.
Did that too, we just made that change, yeah.
The other part, the other charter, I mean, excuse me, other section in here talks about, you have to read all your ordinances by title, this would allow you then to just read it by number and state the title, and not have to read the whole ordinance, which I think is the practice. Section nine clarifies that the mayor and, and city clerk has five business days to attest everything, right now it says five days, just clearly identifying that. Publications, your charter currently had very specific clauses on when you, where and when you had to publicize any ordinance, this is basically changing that, saying you're gonna follow state statute. And a lot of sections in here said that the poor city clerk had to keep three copies of everything, I don't know where she's putting it, but this would now just require her to only have one copy, because mostly, everything's electronic anyways, so that kind of highlights what I would, you know, some of the larger items. Then moving on to contracts, unless there's any discussion, charter, and this is article eight, preparation, this allows, this article specifically says the mayor and city manager can basically prepare and develop the contracts, they put or, or their designee, in case some in situation where the mayor, you got an acting or acting city manager, trying to see if there's any contracts, official advertising, striking all of that out, and just saying you're gonna follow state statute.
That's so much simpler.
Yeah, and that pretty much highlights those changes. In the elections section, section nine, a lot of making it general, gender neutral, clarifying that the person has to receive the majority of the vote, it wasn't necessarily clear, and then there's, well, I guess there's a section in here on elections, on districts, so we might need to then remove this section, so that's, let me just make note of that, regarding like district elections. Article ten, there were no changes, municipal court, the judge came in and spoke to, and I have to give a big shout out to a lot of your department directors, and the municipal judge came and spoke to the committee members about their particular sections, which was kind of nice, and gave some kind of credence in, to these sections. So one of the things your charter did not have is it didn't establish the court by name, and what is that official title, so this does, it, and also clearly identifies that the officer of the court is a judicial officer, so just more clarifying positions and terms, that the presiding judge may appoint pro, judge pro tems as required, in which, and if required, and if, and within her budgetary, budgetary constraints. And also, it's kind of interesting, there's a clause in here that says, all penalties and fees collected by the court shall be basically paid to the judge, and so, which sounds, I guess, kind of interesting in theory, but just saying that it's gonna be paid to the court, and not particularly to the judge. The judge provided some language on, on the rights and processes that were, allows us to be more in modern, I guess, modern in what the process is, so that concludes that article, there were no change.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Go ahead. For the judge, when you establish the court, and then you establish that the presiding judicial officer, should we put in there that we should have a contract with them? Because we already have a contract with the city manager, we have one with the city attorney, and this is the other person we appoint.
In the, in the charter, it, and I don't think it's in this part, because this is only what we changed, I believe it says already that there's a two-year contract.
For the judge?
Right, so I just put, so in this table's only the language that was changed, so I believe in your charter currently, there's a, there's a clause in there about a two-year contract, yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure.
And is there another question, and I'll look that up while we're?
Okay, that's great, thank you.
That was also my question, just that the language would mirror the two other appointed positions.
Yeah, in, in section five, it does say, the presiding judge shall serve a term of two years and may be reappointed, there's, there shall be no limit to the number of terms a presiding judge may serve.
But it doesn't say, we give them a contract, and I would like to have that in there.
Of a contract, specific to a contract.
Didn't say, we, we give them a contract, right, we have them, because that's how we work out the terms with them, and the salary.
Right, so it doesn't say anything about a contract, that's certainly been the practice with the city, but we could incorporate that, but you, as far as a judge, you want, we will want to specify the term.
Yes.
It's a little more difficult to terminate a judge than it is a normal employee, so that's something, there is recommendations, I think even from the Supreme Court, they recommend terms of two to four years.
We, if it's your, if it's your direction, we can definitely add language about a contract, and then we'll leave the two-year term in there, I mean, that would be the contract term, is that sufficient?
I think it's consistent with who the council appoints.
Right.
And selects, whoever we appoint, we give them a contract.
Okay, all right, well, we'll make that, that addition, thank you. Article twelve, franchise and public utilities, there were no recommended changes, and article thirteen, this is the article where the recommendation was for the city council to consider the formation of a charter review committee to review your charter, again, this is not a requirement, and I don't know if you want to make a requirement, as much as it's just that you consider that. And then the last article is article fifteen, and that's just a type of grammar error, so that's really looking at the big, what I call the big major topics, so just so I can summarize, I believe that what I've heard was that you want to remove the charter, the, the district section, thank you, and that the, in regards to replacing the mayor, the council will then determine or appoint someone from the council to replace the mayor, and that position, the council position would then be backfilled as usual from being an appointment, and the municipal court will have a contract, so those three items. All right, thank you, I gotta say, this has been a, a great pleasure, the, the committee has been wonderful, I want, want to make sure that we recognize them, this would be the?
Yes, well, I want to give, first of all, applause. I am so impressed, this was not an easy feat, and I don't know what all your career feels are, but I have to tell you, I, I don't think we could have done a job like you did, I mean, excellent.
No, thank you.
And what a relief it is, because people do pull that charter out every now and then, and they say, yes, but that's in the charter, and it's not, so, then we have to deal with it. So tonight, we want to honor you, so we have a little something to give you, and I've asked one of our councilmen to do it, and so, we'll announce your name, and I'm supposed to let the council do this tonight, but I'll come around and give you an elbow afterwards.
And Mayor, Tammy, Tammy already hit on it, but I did want to thank Darcy, Roar, Julie, Doug, Judge Galindo, and of course Tammy, we had a lot of help from staff to help give us their perspective as the practitioners, and kind of give us that pragmatic, real-world, you know, boots-on-the-ground perspective, and of course, just Darcy for, for keeping us organized, and keeping us notified, and keeping things moving along, so I just want to thank all the staff as well.
Well, this is what makes our city so good, we have such great volunteers that come in and spend the time that they do, and, and then, of course, I know it's hard, when you, then you come before the council, and then we have some little controversy and suggestions and so forth, and after all the hours you've spent, and you, you know, you've, this is exactly the way we want this, and so.
Right, I think, I hope a lot of them will see that we, we had very similar conversations, and you know, the funny thing is, article two, it's like the second thing you hit to, I remember my second meeting thinking, is every meeting gonna be this meaty and this weighty, and then you get into these other ones, and you breeze through them.
Well, now I got a little taste of how this meeting goes once in a while, so are you going to call the names out?
Okay.
I will do that.
Good.
So we'd like to first recognize our chair, Renee Ginn. Our vice chair, Jarrett Hickman. I'm gonna say we'll keep our spacing. Kent Hedges, I don't believe is with us tonight, Kelly Kessler. Shawanda Randolph. And Dave Schaefer.
Do you have anybody that can take a picture of them? What? Yeah, would like to, they should get their pictures. What do we have? We can't, oh, that's right, sorry about that, that's too bad. Another reminder, so.
I think we covered, in one of our last meetings, we covered, there's still, still a number of steps in the process, so hopefully there'll still be time for us to.
Well, again, just one more thank you, extraordinary, we're so pleased, and what a presenter you both are, it was wonderfully, it was well done, so.
Thank you, we, we had a great group, I was really impressed with the amount of participation and discussion, and just a really impressive group, so thank you to you guys for appointing such great people.
No, we're very fortunate, well, yes.
So if I could just wrap it up, Mayor, so what will happen next is, staff will go back and make these changes, and then we will come before council to ask you to do a call for election, so we can begin that process, because any of these changes must be brought to a vote of our, of our residents to approve the charter changes, we are looking at the March ninth of 2021 ballot, and so we'll be very busy as a staff team working on an education, I hesitate to call it campaign, but really, just to go out and make sure that when this does come to the ballot, that our voters are aware that there is an election, when the election is, it'll be a mail-in only ballot, and of course, the issues that they'll be considering when they go to vote, so we look forward to bringing the document back and doing a call for election.
Wonderful, any business left on the table here, anything around to discuss? Well, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, this meeting is adjourned.